Good morning and welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your day to join us for today's public hearing. This is a public hearing for Michigan Water Quality Standards Triennial Review. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagle's Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be moderating the hearing today. So as moderators, I have a couple of things to go through before we get started. First thing is the agenda. This is what we're looking at today. We're going to start off with an introduction. And then the big thing to keep in mind is there's going to be two parts of this hearing. We're going to start off with an information session. So we're going to have some Eagle staff describe water quality standards and the review process, and provide about a 20-minute presentation. And then we're going to have a short question and answer session after that. So you'll be able to ask questions about it. That'll go for about 10, 15 minutes. And then after that, we're going to have the hearing part. That's where everybody will have an opportunity to make a statement on this process and the standards today. Then we'll also cover ways to submit official comments, who to contact with further questions. All right, in case you haven't joined us for one of these online hearings, a couple of things to keep in mind is that all lines are going to be muted during the hearing, except for ours, so you'll be able to hear us. We can't hear you. You can submit your questions at any time using the Q&amp;A box in your Zoom toolbar. Just type those in, send them to us. And during that informational session, Q&amp;A period, we'll answer as many of those as we can. And you can also ask them verbally by raising your hand. But we'll explain how we're going to do that a little bit later on. And if you're on the phone, you'll have that opportunity to ask a question as well, and make a statement. And we'll explain how we're going to do the statements as well. Another thing to keep in mind is that we are recording this hearing. This is being recorded. It'll be posted on our YouTube channel in a couple of days, so you can watch it again or forward it on if you should choose to do so. And with that, we're going to go ahead and introduce our other Eagle staff who are on the line. So Kevin and Dawn, it'd be great if you could introduce yourselves, and then we'll start the presentation.
Cool. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate that. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us. I'm Kevin Goodwin. So I'm Aquatic Biology Specialist with Eagle. I coordinate our Water Quality Standards Program, and I'm within our Lakes Erie Huron Superior Unit within the Water Resources Division.
Hi, I'm Dawn Roush. I am the Unit Supervisor of the Lakes Erie Huron and Superior Unit, which is in the Great Lakes Watershed Assessment, Restoration, and Management Section of Eagle's Water Resources Division.
Okay, great. Thank you both. Kevin, I've got your slides here. If you just want to let me know when to change slides, I'll do that for you.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks, Ryan. Again, thanks, everybody, for joining. I think the last triennial review, we started doing this kind of informational presentation ahead of the hearing to provide a little more context and opportunity to kind of ask questions if there was the chance to do so before we got to the official hearing. So hopefully, this is helpful. So we're going to focus today on kind of what our water quality standards are and what the triennial review is. And so with that, if I could tap the next slide. So we'll start with basically where our water quality standards come from. Ultimately, the genesis of our standards is found in the Clean Water Act. And then that and subsequent guidance for the Great Lakes system kind of gives kind of the notions of what states and tribes who have this Clean Water Act authority have to incorporate in their water quality standards. It talks about the criteria and the methods and things like that, policies and procedures that should be incorporated to build a water quality standards program. Specifically in Michigan, the Natural Resource Environmental Protection Act, NARA, is what provides the department, Eagle, in this case, our authority to coordinate and put together this program. So when I talk about the water quality standards, we're going to be talking really about the Part IV Water Quality Standards, which is the specific kind of document that holds our standards rules. And but that's just some of the myriad of rules that the NARA provides authority for. Next slide, please. So the standards really are kind of the primary tool, a primary tool of the Clean Water Act to both maintain and restore water quality. Within Michigan, kind of this statement here is really the leadoff of our water quality standards. The purpose of it is to protect the public health and welfare, to enhance and maintain the quality of water, and to protect the state's natural resources. And so really, the standards establish these kind of minimum water quality requirements needed by which the waters, the surface water state should be managed to achieve these kind of ultimate goals. Next slide, please. The standards themselves are essentially a series of rules. They address both ambient conditions, so conditions that we want to see out in the, in our rivers, lakes, streams, and wetlands, and also discharge-specific conditions. So those things that speak to our point source discharges in our permitting program. The standards can be typically, people think of them as a number, you know, some sort of a threshold that we can either be above or below, depending on what the standard is. But it can also be a statement, a statement of condition. Ultimately, either whether it's a number or a statement, the goal really here is to protect surface water for designated uses. And we'll talk about that in a minute here, too. Next slide. So standards, and this is across the board. This isn't a Michigan thing. This is a water quality standards thing. Standards are made up of essentially three major parts, major components. Those designated uses I just mentioned, which we'll go into a little bit more detail here in a minute. The criteria that sort of help protect those things. And then an anti-degradation component, which we'll talk about also here. I'm going to cover each of these three real quickly here. So next slide. So designated uses. These are the kind of what is protected. This is really the, these are the goals of our, of our standards really, are to maintain these qualities in our surface water. These are sort of the values, the kind of inherent and, and both integral values of our ecosystem, but also values in terms of how we may use water. And so we have this range of our designated uses. This is spelled out in rule. Everything from aquatic life-type uses, so fishery uses, other indigenous aquatic life, which is, which really captures, again, the range of kind of ecological life in and around water, our ability to recreate in water, consume fish, and also use the water for things like agriculture, for irrigation, for navigation, and for water supply. So these are the uses, again, this is, these are the ultimate goals, is that these things are able to be maintained and properly used within our, our surface waters. Next slide, please. And the way we protect those within the standards is through our criteria. You'll hear the term criteria. You'll hear the term standards that some people use. You'll hear the term values. Ultimately, it's the, these are the numeric or the narrative conditions that are within the water quality standards that are designed, if met, to support those designated uses. And so these are the numeric numbers or narrative statements are really there to protect the uses. They apply statewide. Some of them are specific to certain water bodies. So example, cold water fishery uses are only applied to cold water systems. But generally, our, our water quality standards and our uses apply statewide. And again, these, these criteria, these standards are used to both protect the water quality, and they're also used to evaluate. When we go out and monitor water quality around the state, they give us that idea of something to test against, the litmus to understand whether what we're seeing from a monitoring standpoint, how it informs us in terms of whether those uses are being protected or not. So we've got the designated uses. We've got the criteria to support them. Next slide, please. And the third part is the, excuse me, the anti-degradation component, which is basically how our existing water quality is protected. The goal, I often think of it like with our standards, is that we don't go backwards from a water quality standpoint. That obviously, we have places in the state that aren't meeting the quality we would like, and the goal is to increase that quality, restore those waters. But we should also be using the standards and anti-degradation so we don't backslide. We don't take, we're able to still maintain our existing designated uses, our existing water quality, protect our high-water quality areas. And so that's what the anti-degradation components are for. Next slide, please. So the water quality standards kind of put into implementation then are used in, I'd say, all of our Water Resource Division programs. They're kind of a baseline for a lot of what we do. They're used within our MPDS permitting program. That's our National Pluton Discharge Elimination System permitting. So that's the program that has permits for point source discharges, things of pipes and ditches, things coming out of facilities, from treatment plants, stuff like that. So these standards are used to help evaluate those discharges and make sure that whatever's coming out of those, that, that program is protective of designated uses in our waters. It's also, as I said, used to evaluate our surface waters. We have an extensive monitoring program, and this gives us the ability to say, when we go out and monitor for certain things, what do we compare it to to understand conditions in our waters? And those evaluations that are used to make water quality assessments, to understand whether the uses are being supported. We report on that every two years to the USCPA. It's called our Integrated Report. So we use the combination of that monitoring data, those monitoring data and the standards and understanding that to be able to make a statements about whether or not those uses are supported, where additional work needs to be done, things like that. And so it really helps both from a permitting standpoint and with that kind of ambient condition understanding in our lakes, rivers, streams, and wetlands. So next slide, please. A little, a lot of detail here, and you know, to absorb the whole thing. But as I said, the NARA, Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, is the, is the, the state act that gives the department its authority. And I've highlighted some places here within Part 31 that kind of talks about the role that the department, Eagle, needs to have in protecting and conserving water resources. And so, and it talks here about the, you know, the ability to control pollution and investigate and conduct studies and promulgate rules and enforce these. An important component of this is a change that was added in 2005 that became, that became viable in 2006. That's the next slide, please. Where there was language inserted by the legislature that as of 2006, the department shall not promulgate any additional rules under this part after December 31st. So this is important to note because, again, we're having this triennial review process to look at our water quality standards, where changes may be needed, things like that, additional protections. And it's important to acknowledge that legislatively, the ability to change the written word of our water quality standards was removed in 2006. And so it would take a legislative act to restore that. So that being said, obviously, that impacts, has a potential impact on our water quality standards and the programs that rely on it. But it's certainly not a complete kind of shutdown of that process. And I'd like to explain that a little bit, too. So next slide, please. As I said, one of the abilities within our water quality standards, we've got numeric values that are incorporated in there. And again, those are hard written in there for things like dissolved oxygen temperature, pH, and some of our metals and such for toxic chemicals. But we also have a narrative components in there, too, which are, again, these statements of condition. And some of the rules within our standards are based on that. Can you advance, please? So, for example, we have a physical characteristics rule that talks about these certain physical conditions of the water, and they shall not have injurious kind of qualities and quantities to our designated uses. Without providing any numbers to that, it's a statement of, of condition. So we don't want these conditions to lead to impacts to our uses. Advance one more time, please, Ryan. And similarly, our plant nutrient rule is also a narrative statement. Again, that nutrients shall be limited. And you'll see this kind of repeat theme throughout the water quality standards, that the conditions in our surface waters shouldn't be injurious or have the potential to become injurious to our designated uses. And so the fact that these kinds of narrative statements are in there without a hard number, I think, still allows us to come up with methods to survey the waters, ways to look at them, ways to compare them to the goal, which is to not impact designated uses. And so it, even though we don't have the rulemaking authority to put a hard number in here if we would want to, there's still the ability to interpret this, these goals into our monitoring programs, into our permitting programs, things like that, to still meet that, that desired effect, which is protecting surface water for the designated uses. Next slide. Another important narrative criteria is our, is one that's contained in our Toxic Substance Rule, which is a Rule 57. So Rule 57 is unique because it has kind of both numeric criteria that are hardcoded in there, some metals and some, some things like PCBs and such, actually have numbers in the rule. So those are written in there. And again, as, since 2006, those can't be changed without some sort of a legislative act. But it also has this narrative component to the rule, which is significant to acknowledge, which is a, it's a narrative process that follows the Great Lakes guidance. All the region, Great Lakes regional states have this kind of language in their rules. And essentially, I describe it as a recipe, and that's kind of playing it down a little bit. But it's, it's the process by which our toxicologists can take data and move through and develop protective values using this narrative process within Rule 57, and still advance then the protection of water quality for things like emerging contaminants that come out or new data that are available for, for certain chemicals. And so even though we can't kind of hard code those numbers into rule, we can still use the process to develop values that are protective of water quality and incorporate then those values within our permit program and within our monitoring programs as well. And so, so again, although it's not ideal to not have rulemaking authority, there's still ways, abilities within the standards to kind of keep moving programs forward and be responsive to emerging issues and things like that. And, and also worth noting is that there are also site-specific options within this Rule 57, so that even for those numbers that are promulgated in the rule, those that are hard written in the rule, there are options to develop site-specific variations of that. It still has to be approved through EPA, but to acknowledge, you know, issues that go on. For example, we have site-specific criteria that were developed a number of years ago for some streams up in the Upper Peninsula for copper to deal with, with issues up there and acknowledge the conditions of those streams in particular. So, so there are options, even with this rulemaking authority removed, to still, I think, be responsive to, to concerns. Next slide, please. So the triennial review. What the Clean Water Act says is that states and tribes with water quality standards program authority have to review these every three years. Doesn't give a real hard schedule on which three years. It's just every three years that, that we have to review. Have an open comment period, which we're in, in the middle of right now. I'll talk about in a minute. Have a public hearing, which we're heading into here momentarily. We have to also review any recently developed over the last three years or so criteria that the USCPA has come up with. And kind of look at all this stuff and report, excuse me, report back to EPA, USCPA, that we've gone through this process, what kind of comments we had, if we're taking any actions or any changes are necessary. I see the process as sort of a codified way to make sure that water quality standards don't just get set and then put aside and languish, right? This is, I think this is a process by which, again, states and tribes sort of are forced to look, to make sure they're staying up on the newest science, the newest concerns, emerging issues, that kind of stuff. And so, you know, hopefully, and I think our program does it well. Programs do that anyway. They're, they're always kind of evaluating emerging issues, evaluating new things that need to be tackled. But this is a, another avenue by which we take a kind of a purposeful look at those sorts of things and open it up to, to comments to make sure that, you know, we're not going through with blinders on and missing things. So that's a requirement every three years, and so that's where we're in right now for this one. Next slide, please. And I see this as, I mean, this is an opportunity. Again, those of you who are on here clearly have some, some level of interest in this. We've even got, you know, the department itself needs to have an interest in this. And we do in terms of kind of self-evaluation and reviewing, are we, are we being responsive to our own programs and our own needs? Are there things out there that we should be paying more attention to and things like that? So it's an opportunity for, to hear from kind of all sides on this and whether or not we've got some, you know, still have work to do and places to go with our water quality standards. Next slide, please. Specifically, when we're talking about triennial review within Michigan, we're talking about the rules related to our standards and kind of standard adjacent. And so that's our Part IV and our Part VIII rules. Our Part IV, as I've been talking about, are specific water quality standards. We also kind of open up the Part VIII Water Quality-Based Effluent Limit Development Rules for Toxic Substances. So these are the rules that then get used within our permitting program and kind of implement those water quality standards in that, in that setting. Next slide, please. So we will be reviewing, as I said, recent EPA criteria. And again, that's an important component of the triennial review. It's a chance, EPA is always on their own developing new criteria, updated things like that, that are important nationally, important for different programs. And they put those criteria and that information out there for states and tribes to use or not, but just to make aware that there's kind of advances in that science. And so, again, the triennial review I see as a period to purposefully say, all right, what does EPA, what new criteria have been created? What updates have they made in the last three years? And take a look at that from a Michigan perspective and understand whether anything that, that's been worked on from EPA perspective is helpful within our Michigan Water Quality Standards as well. Are these things that are relevant to our state, are relevant to our permits, are relevant to protecting human health and aquatic life? One of the, I think, unique things that Michigan's got, especially within our region anyway, within the Great Lakes region, is that we have actual aquatic life and human health toxicologists on staff here in Water Resources Division, whose role, one of the components of the role, is to follow up on things like this. You know, make sure that they're staying abreast of what EPA's been doing and the newest science so that we can take a critical and practical look at, at new information that's out there and make sure that our standards are being reflective of that where it's, where, where it makes sense and where it's relevant to our state. Next slide, please. So we're going to also be reviewing comments that were received, whether they're received today through the hearing or subsequent in, in a written fashion. We'll go through all of those and look at things like whether or not they're relevant to even to the standards. As you may imagine, sometimes we get comments that are, that are important comments that maybe don't, aren't germane to this program, but we can pass them along to other programs. So first, we want to make sure they're, they're relevant to what we're talking about. Often, it's even just fact-checking. Sometimes we've had comments submitted where people were asking for a certain standards, and we already have them in the books, and they just, perhaps, it's just putting people and standards together, making sure they're aware of what we've got. But looking at comments, too, to see if they're elevating priorities for us. So they, are they making us aware of blind spots that we've got, things like that? And then trying to identify if there's opportunities, like I was talking about, that already exist within our current rules, within some of that narrative component, things like that, to, to make some change relative to some of these comments. And there will be comments at some point, too, that, that really call for like a written change to our standards. And for those things, until we have legislative authority back, those get kind of put on a list of things that we need to investigate further when rulemaking authority is returned. Next slide, please. So being mindful of what makes an effective public comment. Again, certainly, anybody can turn in anything they want. But to be most useful, trying to make sure that comments are fairly specific in terms of what action should be taken or standards or changes to make. It's always helpful if, if, if commenters have access to data or supporting information to provide reasons why that, that's important. And also to note what the goal and outcome is of, of the change that could be made if, if we were able to make these changes. So these are the kinds of things as you structure your comments. If you're going to make some, I guess I would just ask to consider because, you know, the more information and the more specific we have, the better. It helps us kind of process through this information and review it. So, next slide, please. Again, so we're going to compile this information that we get from the review. I, I still think one of the biggest things it does is make sure that the directions that department's going and the, and the priorities that we've got reflects what we're hearing from commentators and from the public as well. And so making sure that we're being reflective where interests and concerns lie. And so I think, in that sense, you know, hearing information from folks can help us identify and plan for the future. Identify if there's priorities that should be elevated or things we're missing. And so figure out where we can help kind of move, we as a department can help move our program in a direction that's, that's supportive of some of those concerns. And as I said, and I want to acknowledge that if there are actual written changes needed to the standards at this point, without rulemaking authority, those typically will need to get tabled until that authority is returned. And so there certainly could be subsets of things that fall into that category as well. Next slide, please. So, as I said, one of the components of a triennial review is a comment period, which we are in right now. It started on the 31st October. It's scheduled to run till December 19th. That's our open period. Following that, we'll review the submitted comments, criteria by USCPA over the last three or four years. And then ultimately, we'll submit a memo to USCPA explaining what we got for comments, whether anything's being addressed, how it's being addressed, that sort of stuff, or if it's being tabled and such. So there will be, there is a final submittal that goes to USCPA. And, and any commenter that has sent in information will get copies of that as well when that goes out, so you can at least see what, what if anything was done, how it was considered, and that kind of stuff. So, next slide, please. And with that, I think we, I'm ready. We can move to a Q&amp;A that ends my presentation part. But I'm glad to take any questions on what I've just presented there. Again, this is not the hearing component. This is not the comment yet for that. That'll come in a moment. But if you have questions about what we just presented, that's, I'd like to open it up for that.
All right. Yeah, many thanks, Kevin. Thanks for setting the stage, some good background information for sure. Kevin mentioned we'll take some questions. And the way that we're going to do that, there's a couple of ways you could ask a question. Submit your question using the Q&amp;A box. So you see that at the bottom of your screen, just type your question in and send it to us so we can ask Kevin. Or if you'd like to ask your question out loud or verbally, you can click your raise hand icon. So just click the, the hand button and raise your hand, and we'll call on you and unmute you to allow you to ask your question. If there's anybody calling in by phone, you can select the star nine, star nine button on your phone. That will raise your hand and zoom. We'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And then you can unmute yourself. You'll get instructions on the phone how to unmute yourself. And then you can ask your question. And as Kevin mentioned, this period of time is for questions only. If you have a statement to make, please hold on to those until we get into the hearing part, which is going to be coming up next. So we'll go ahead and see if we have any questions. All right, I'm not seeing a question in the chat. There was one that was entered, but it looks like it's blank. So if you meant to ask a question, you know, feel free to send it, send us another one with your question in it. And then while we're waiting to see if we have any questions, just to let you know, the next, as part, as mentioned, the next part of this is going to be the hearing part. Will you be able to make a statement today? And then we'll go through those other ways to make a statement, again, which Kevin had mentioned a little bit earlier. We'll go through those a couple of different times in case you miss them or in case you change your mind and decided that you wanted to make a statement today or that you didn't and wanted to do it another time. We'll go through all of that again. All right, so I'm still not seeing any questions. And so if we don't have any questions today, which is entirely possible, and if you, I should mention, if you have a question that comes up that you're like, oh, man, I wish I would ask that question, we're going to be providing Kevin's contact information so you can follow up. So this won't be your only opportunity to ask a question. All right, so, all right. Here's a question. If Eagle tables needed rulemaking to wait for it to get rulemaking authority back, couldn't the EPA, probably under the next administration, in three to four years, step in and promulgate the federal standard?
Good question. I think, I don't know the ultimate answer to that. I would expect that if, if it came to that point, I would, I would hope that we would see some additional actions by Michigan Legislature to, to maintain that control within the state's process, right? I think that's an important component of, of states having this program is to also have the state's ability to control the priorities and that sort of stuff. And so, you know, playing a lot of what-if games. So possibly, but again, hopefully, we wouldn't get to that point because we recognize the importance of maintaining that sort of level of autonomy in the state program.
All right, thanks, Kevin. All right, and thanks for asking that question. I'm still not seeing any others. So if there is one, please type it in now. And if we don't get any more questions, we'll move on to the next part of the hearing today. All right, so I'm still not seeing any other, oops, here we go. All right, so I have someone mention that they have to leave the meeting, but will submit comments. And good work.
Looking forward to it, Bill. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks a lot. I'm still not seeing any other questions. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next part. But before we do, we just want to reiterate those other ways to make a comment again. And I'll read those out loud in case there's anybody on the phone. I mailed to Kevin Goodwin, Water Resources Division, Eagle, Post Office Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan 48909-7958. Or by email to goodwin k at michigan.gov or goodwink, which is an awesome email, Kevin. It's G O O D W I N K at M I C H I G N dot gov. And as Kevin mentioned, it'll be open, the comment period will be open till December 19th. So you have until then. All right. So we're going to go ahead and move into the hearing part. So Dawn, if you wouldn't mind reading the opening statement before us, we will kick things off.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. I have an echo here.
I think you're good. Kevin's muted. So you should be able to.
Good morning. As a reminder, my name is Dawn Roush and I work for Eagle, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes Energy. I am the unit supervisor of the Lakes Erie here on its superior unit, which is in the Great Lakes Waterset Assessment, Restoration and Management Section of Eagle's Water Resources Division. I will be serving as the hearing officer today on the Part Four Rules Entitled Water Quality Standards and the Part Eight Rules Entitled Water Quality Based Effluent Limit Development for Toxic Substances. The Water Resources Division is responsible for administering the Part Four Water Quality Standards and Part Eight Water Quality Based Effluent Limit Development for Toxic Substances Rules. The law governing those responsibilities is Part 31, Water Resources Protection within Public Act 451 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act of 1994, also known as Public Act 451 as amended or Act 451. The Part Four Rules establish water quality requirements for surface waters of the state to protect the public health and welfare, to enhance and maintain the quality of water and to protect the state's natural resources. The Part Eight Rules establish toxic substance water quality based controls for the point source discharges that are protective of the designated uses of the surface waters of the state. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide the public an opportunity to submit comments whether any of the existing rules should be modified or new rules adopted. The Federal Clean Water Act Sections 303(c)(1) requires that at least once every three years, each state water pollution control agency hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing applicable water quality standards and as appropriate, modifying and adopting standards. This process is referred to as the triennial review. As an additional note, Rule 3103, Sub Rule 2 of Act 451 prohibits the department from promulgating any additional rules after December 31st, 2006. However, it is our hope that this prohibition will be rescinded in the future. Therefore, we are moving forward withholding this public hearing to receive suggested modifications to the Part Four and Part Eight Rules. Kevin Goodwin, the Water Quality Standards Coordinator, and I are here today to take your comments.
All right. Thank you for reading that opening statement, Dawn. So I'm going to lay out some more rules and how we're going to take your comments today. So it's going to be one comment per person to give everybody a fair opportunity. And you'll have five minutes to make your comment. You don't have to use the entire five minutes, but that's how much you'll, you'll have. You'll see a countdown timer in the upper right hand corner of your screen. It'll count down from five minutes. And then if, when you have one minute left, you'll hear this noise. So you'll know that you have a minute left in your comments and know when to start wrapping those up. So during registration, there was an opportunity to indicate if you wanted to make a comment. So we're going to start with that list of names who wanted to make a, indicated they want to make a comment during registration. And then we'll go on to anybody else who would want to make a comment. If you didn't indicate you wanted to make a comment during registration, just click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. That will raise your hand and zoom. And we'll call on you using your name and then you can make your comment. For people on the phone, you can select star nine on your phone. That will raise your hand on zoom. And then we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And you'll receive instructions on your phone to unmute yourself and then you can begin your comment when you're ready. All right. So with that, we only have one person who indicated they want to make a comment during registration. That was Bill Creel, but it sounded like Bill was not able to attend the rest of today's hearing. So we're going to go ahead and just open it up to the raised hands. So if you didn't indicate during registration that you wanted to make a comment, but you do want to make a comment today on the rules, go ahead and raise your hand and zoom. And again, as mentioned, select the raised hand icon and we'll call on you, unmute you, and then you'll have your opportunity to make a comment. And for those on the phone can select star nine. And then after, if you didn't want to make a comment today, we'll also go through those other ways to make a comment that we've mentioned a couple of times already. So you, you can send comments in by the other methods in case you didn't want to make a statement today. And then we're going to provide Kevin's contact information in case you want to ask Kevin any questions in follow up. So we'll give it a couple of more seconds. I'm not seeing any raised hands at the moment. Let's see here. Still not seeing any raised hands. So we're going to go ahead and move on. And, and again, if you want to make a comment, raise your hand and zoom. This is your opportunity before we move on. Or if you're on the phone by selecting star nine. All right. Still not seeing any raised hands. So Dawn, do you want to read the closing statement to close out this part of the hearing for us today?
Thanks, Ryan.
You're good.
Waiting for, okay. The public comment period for taking suggestions regarding the existing rules is open until 5:00 PM on Friday, December 19th, 2025. Comments may be submitted until then. Staff will consider the suggestions provided and will determine if changes to the existing rules should be made in the future once the department regains rulemaking authority. Comments may be submitted to Kevin Goodwin at the following address, Eagle, E G L E, Water Resources Division, PO Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan, ZIP Code 48909-7958. He can also be reached by email at goodwink@michigan.gov, G O O D W I N K at michigan.gov. Thank you for your comments and cooperation today. We appreciate your interest in suggesting changes to the rules and that you took the time to join us. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you again. Kevin, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the attendance at this and hopefully the, at least the informational session is helpful. We typically don't get a lot of, we wait for the written comments. Most of you, I assume, will be sending written comments. I look forward to those. Absolutely. Reach out if you've got any questions or anything from that presentation that is, is tickling at your brain. Appreciate your time though. Thank you this morning.
Yeah, thank you both. I should also mention that the ways to make a comment we're putting in the chat too, so you can find them there. If you have any follow up questions, like we mentioned before, here's Kevin's contact information. Kevin Goodwin at 517-290-4198, or by that same email to make comments, goodwin k at michigan.gov, G O O D W I N K at M I C H I G A N dot gov. Yeah. Thanks, Kevin and Dawn for being part of this, for all of you for calling in and being part of this hearing today. Last thing I'll leave you with is just a reminder that this hearing was recorded. I would be posting that on a YouTube channel in a couple of days. So in case you wanted to see that presentation again or this hearing, you're more than welcome to do so. So with that, thanks again. I hope you all have a great rest of your day.